Hi, my name is Beverly B. H. Levy. What bothers me is that Liddell has the police escort her here every week. Every week. Every time a council meeting or whatever kind of meeting. And I don't feel that that's fair because we were out this weekend getting signatures for Liddell Lewis and Liddell pulls up like she Johnny Old Matthews. You know, she want to hear what we're saying to the residents. This is our third recall, our fourth recall, our third time to attempt and you ain't came out now one of them times. You feel you so scared for your life, but you pull up like Big Bird at Bingo. You know, I don't understand that, you know? What is your problem? You was checking, you put on Facebook that you were checking out the lawn cutting. Everybody over there cut their own lawn, so what you checking out? Wasn't no empty houses on that street, not a one. You ran after three guys trying to, you tried to jump three guys in here. You are a very sick person and you five foolish, if y'all keep running with her, y'all gonna be very sick too. It's sad. You all came here to bid on that money for this lady back here. We already know you needed your five people. We already know. Now that Quincy showed up, you know you, you ready for it. He's your, what he call, fifth vote? You guys better wake up and you don't like the fact when we tell you when you right and when you wrong. Nobody's looking, nobody cares, seventh ward, she stayed down in the dumps, you know? It's, it's sad. We are sitting up here trying to get our city right and we got you crooked five up there. So she got enough people to vote for whatever you want to pass. But it's gonna be okay because it ain't gonna be long for you gonna be out of that seat. Y'all have a blessed day.
Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
I'm gonna read what Doug Matthews wrote because there have been racial remarks made. He stated, "One, I was not black. I'm not black." I don't know what box I check. He said, "I was orange, I was pumpkin color." And as he's over there now doing this eyes whining. Now this is the good public service person with the childish behavior. I am a black woman. Our skin, in case you didn't know, we are an array of colors. We're melanated. You stated, "Hey snakebite, form any hatred, racial hatred again? Just another day at the office." By the way, your avatar is pumpkin colored, not black. Look, look at him again, over there. And we know who he represents. This behavior is childish. I wouldn't want him representing me in anything. I wouldn't. Those words that were said which were hateful, they were hateful. Pete, I didn't file the police report on you Doug, but I would've been happy to do it.
I wanted to highlight what, what our resident said over there who was in my ward with the caravan of cars blocking traffic. I was out working in my ward and ran into a crowd of people and even in that moment, it should be clear exactly why I need an escort. The threats continue. People continue to come to my home. They threaten to come where I'm working in my ward. So this is where we are unfortunately and I will continue to do the great work. I am so thankful for my colleagues that voted for the lawn remediation meeting, for the youth. When I pulled up and saw the individuals, I was told, "Why are you here? Go away. Why are you here? Go away." I heard someone over the microphone speaking and then I heard people saying that I stole $155,000. What we need to make sure that the residents know, when people come to you with the petitions for recall or whatever, you make sure that they read to you what's on that line. Because "I stole $155,000," we want to make this ethical. If I'm supposed to be removed from the seat, let it be removed off of truth, not off of made up fictitious lies because someone would like to have my seat. I will continue to serve. The second ward is proud. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like the floor doing council response?
Madam Chair.
Yes ma'am.
Is that with separations, without separations? We gotta separate. We just can't go into the consent agenda voting for the consent.
Point of order. What's your point? What's your point?
We, yeah, so we've been doing this for a long time and we, and then we're on the roll call now.
Well, yeah, because she said approve the consent agenda. She didn't say with or without separations and then somebody supported it, so I just moved on.
Right, so we're on the roll call right now. We're on the roll call? Point of order, did you say roll call, Madam Clerk?
What's, what's your point, Councilwoman Priestley?
I'm just trying to be clear, did you say?
I did say roll call.
Okay, so when we say roll call, Madam Clerk, I thought we proceed with the roll call.
Madam Chair.
One second. Ms. Priestley had a point of order.
Rule 8.5 says after a motion to adopt a consent agenda is made and seconded, the presiding officer or chair shall ask for separations.
Thank you, Ms. Priestley. Are there any separations?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Coming in the fifth ward.
I would like to separate them.
There's only one left. Councilman Murphy, go ahead.
I still have the floor.
I never gave you the floor though.
Oh, okay. Well, no, no problem. I don't want you to be upset.
I promise you I'm not upset, but the thing is you have to make sure that you stay in order, Councilwoman Burns.
I said, "Madam Chair, you didn't acknowledge me." Madam Chair, and I said it before, Quincy, Madam Chair.
Right, you didn't wait to be acknowledged, you just started talking, so I assumed you didn't want the floor because you didn't wait for me to acknowledge you.
I'm not gonna argue.
Absolutely, Councilman Murphy, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. So because of the nature of time, because according to the Open Meetings Act, our meeting is supposed to start at 5:30. I would like to make a motion to send everything to council so we can address everything there so we can proceed with the meeting and so we can finish in a timely fashion. So this way, we can handle everything that we're supposed to handle and we can be in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. Because according to our agenda, this meeting is supposed to start at 5:30. So I would like to make a, I would like to put a motion on the floor. I would like to put a motion on the floor.
There's a motion on the floor to move all agenda items to council and to begin the council meeting. Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and properly supported. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Back property line of the club.
So the alley is owned by the city.
Sir, 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 you can't yell out, sir. Sir, you can't yell out. You can't yell out. I didn't call you to the lectern, sir. Okay, but I didn't call you to the lectern.
I called Quincy.
Yeah.
Okay, oh, stop. When you asked for people to speak on the matter, you asked for two different groups to come to the lectern and so...
I did, I did ask if he could speak on the property line first, well, his property.
I, I didn't hear you say that to him. Okay, well, that's your first warning because you're not gonna keep yelling out. That's your first warning, stop yelling out.
Point of order.
Yes, go ahead, what's your point?
The gentleman said fuck you. The gentleman said fuck you.
What gentleman?
While you're talking. While, while you were talking, I was looking dead as you said, you said fuck you.
Hold on, hold on. I'll just let you know for the record.
How do you not say that?
I...
Yeah, I didn't hear that.
I'll wait my second round.
No problem. All right, okay.
I'll wait my second round.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Burns, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, due to Mr. Jared.
Okay, Mr. Jared, will you please join us at the lectern, please?
Y'all step back.
Uh, Mr. Jared, so...
All right, anymore? Go ahead, Mr. Murphy.
So I wanted to see was this administrative stuff that the administration was trying to get done because, because of the death in my family, I need to go. So I wanted to see was there something that they can do? Because I can't, I'm not gonna be able to stay here all night.
And request for information.
Madam Chair, you are abusing your time.
No.
You're abusing your time.
No, 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 no. Excuse me, Ms. Burns, let's be clear. The request for information is an opportunity for colleagues to afford you information that may, that may affect your next vote. That's within the council rules. So I'm just giving you a little assistance to assist you with your next vote, just in case you didn't know. So that was the whole point of, for example, our ex-kids. A lot of families that have children, they need help, so thank you.
Madam Chair, we're having a discussion and dialogue and as the president, you should know.
Proceed, Ms. Burns.
This is my time and you need to follow the rules.
Proceed, Ms. Burns.
Don't say this about children because any child or parent who has lost a life is serious and it should not be said up here so cavalier that this job was going to save their life. A lot of these kids belong to the streets now.
And a lot of the jobs.
Thank you. I got a point of order.
She's out of order, Councilman, um, um, Chairperson Lewis. She's out of order.
Proceed.
Call her to order. I call you to order.
Okay. Now, proceed.
You, you're not getting this, this part and so the animosity.
Request for information.
Go ahead.
I thought the chambers belonged to the people or is it only when the people agree with them do the chambers belong to them?
Now, now, that is not a point of information, that's another.
Ma'am, you're being brought to order, stop yelling out. Ma'am, ma'am, that's your warning.
I appeal to the ruling of the Chair.
Ma'am, that's your warning.
I appeal the ruling of the Chair.
That's fine, so there's appeals of the ruling of the Chair.
I support, I support that appeal.
And we have supported by Ms. Jerry Winfrey Carter. All right, so the Chair's ruling is being appealed because the lady in the pink continued to yell out loudly. So proceed, uh, was it Ms., Ms. Burns?
You have the right.
Okay, she's gonna be going ahead and start my time. The Chair called the young lady in the pink to order for loudly yelling out, if I hear you over here, because it's hard to hear up here. But, 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 and, and, see, again, there you go, second warning. Stop yelling out. It goes against the council rules. Your time to talk is when you're at the lectern, you're not here. And so that's why the Chair brought the young lady in the audience to order. We must have order in these chambers to restore these chambers back to the people. People don't even want to come to these chambers because we have people yelling out, people being disorderly and council members being complicit with it. I'm not doing it. And so what we won't do, I'm not going back and forth. We must make sure that we're in order and as she was brought to order, she proceeded to speak. And so therefore, she caught that first warning. So, so what we're doing, this is, this is the Faith Foundation Resources Alpha Application where they applied underneath the category of youth jobs.
Madam Chair, this is my time.
No, but you asked a question, Ms. Burns.
No, no, my question was, and I was not asking.
Proceed, Ms. Burns.
Yeah, I'm, I'm done. I'm done.
All right, so if there be no one else, I'll go ahead and take my time. You know, as, as we talk about, um, sir, put the sign down, you're blocking the view. You're obstructing, sir, that's your warning. Put the sign down, you're obstructing the view.
Point of order. Point of order, Madam Chair.
What is your point?
There is no rule stating you have, you're blocking view with the sign. We have no rule in the charter.
Ms., Ms. Burns.
I'm on my point of order.
Proceed.
Thank you. There is no, no council rule or charter rule and according to the Open Meetings Act, you can hold a sign. It does not say when you hold a sign.
Ms. Burns, could you please show me in the, in the Open Meetings Act where it said you can hold a sign?
That's the right to protest.
Okay.
It's the right to, a sign is a right to protest.
Ms. Burns, nice try, so what, 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 what happened is...
Um, I was looking at rules regarding signs and I've only found it in Detroit's council rules where it said that they can hold signs but they can't obstruct view. That is, is not in our rules, so until it is in our rules, I...
Well, that's fine, but again, the Chair ordered the sign to be put down or be off to the side where you're not obstructing the view of others.
Point of order.
What is your point?
The Chair can only enforce if there is a rule. The Chair cannot make up a rule. The Chair has to go by the rules that we already have in place. You cannot enact a rule that has not went through the process of public hearing and anything else. You're making up a rule, Madam Chair.
I'm not making up a rule. Again, 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 again. These chambers are a place for all colleagues, okay? And for, as well as all residents.
Request for information.
He moved the sign.
Request for information.
What is your request?
What time are we on now?
Pardon?
Where, where are, what time are we on?
What time are we on?
Yeah, the clock isn't moving, you're having, uh, you're making a disre, where are we?
Well, I was in the, I was in the process of being, about to speak and then Councilman Burns said, "A point of order." Yeah, but, but I told, I gave the gentleman who was holding up the sign and obstructing the view, I gave him a warning. And then, Ms. Burns, I believe, uh, yeah, I'm about to be back on my time right now. All right, appreciate it. It is, it is very unfortunate to hear individuals in this chambers clap for youth jobs not getting passed. It is very unfortunate to hear. Now, when we hear parents come here saying that their child, family is a vic, Mr. Wilson, that's your warning. Stop yelling out. And ma'am, have a seat. Okay, very good. Okay, Mr. Wilson, that's your second warning, please go. No, I, I don't need you to leave me with anything. Excuse me, Mr. Wilson, that's your second warning. And that's your second warning. According to the disorderly persons city code subsection, you only get two warnings. Please leave peacefully. Thank you. Thank you.
You're dumbass.
Thank you.
You're dumbass.
Um, excuse me.
You're dumbass.
And see, this is what happens when we try to do good government. We have a gentleman clapping, we calling the Chair names, then we have people obstructing the signs. What is your point?
How is this germane to the topic?
It's very germane and I will tell you how it's germane. Because in these chambers, it looks like we're not standing on business, we're standing on chaos. That's why it's germane.
Point of information, request for information.
Go ahead.
Madam Chair, are you aware that you're the one that's causing the chaos?
Well, we can say what we may, but I will continue to work for the people and stand on what's right. And what I won't do, I won't vote against youth jobs. See, when, when we were passing money for St. Mark, the pastor wasn't here clapping and if this body, if these people in here feel okay, we're voting against youth jobs because of whatever personal order that they may have? What is your point of order?
First of all, Madam Chair, we haven't voted against it yet.
What rule have you broken?
Well, you're speaking to the motives of us voting. We have not voted.
Ms. Burns, Ms. Burns, Ms. Burns, no more speaking to your order.
We brought 23.21.
Ms. Burns, as I proceed.
This is another attempt, in my opinion, to further disengage the residents.
That's right.
Another attempt to weaponize the police against the residents. Therefore, I will not be voting on this resolution, this ordinance. I will not vote on this ordinance. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Burns.
I will not be supporting this. I agree.
Oh, oh, please stop. So this is the second round. This is the second round. First round. Proceed.
I will not be supporting this, number one, and this furthering to, I feel, to weaponize the police, to attack residents if they have been constantly and consistently attacked. Um, much of the language in seven, out of the, or section seven, is subjective. I've been, my life has been threatened. All of our, many of our lives have been threatened.
Excuse me, that, that's your first warning.
You don't even know me.
Ma'am, that's, excuse me, that's your first warning. No, that's your second one, that's your first. So, yeah, so you're removed from the meeting. No, this is order, Ms. Burns.
You are a threat because you are a threat and you are too.
It's fine, go, go on and get some signatures from, go ahead, use your time wisely. So as you leave in silence, Ms. Beverly Levy, oh, yes you do, uh, please, according, according to this only person city code section, according to the city code subsection, it states, "Any person who prevents the peaceful and orderly conduct of any meeting will be given one warning." She will give me one warning. If they persist in disrupting the meeting, that individual will be subject to arrest. Violators shall be removed from the meeting. She's in violation and she needs to be removed from this meeting. Thank you so much, Mr. Officer. Now, Ms. Priestley, I do apologize. Uh, can you please give her five more seconds on her time? Could you give her five more seconds on her time? Thank you.
And that's what matters anyway. Have a good day, y'all. All right. Thank you.
And I think that the hate that we're getting up here is because it is the hate that we've been giving to them and people are angry. The signs are a protest of, "We want change." Instead of looking within and saying, "Hey, what can I do to fix it?" And even work with my colleagues, we're being over here talking about slash and tires and other stuff. People want to respond to that. When you gaslight.
Request for information.
That is what happens.
So...
Without gaslight, she has a right to walk up and protest with the sign. She wasn't being disruptive and talking, she was just protesting or walking. There's no rule that says she can't walk and forth back and forth with the sign. There is no rule that says that.
All right, thank you. Um, so as the Chair of this body, I will read again what the disorderly persons city code subsection says. It just doesn't say you have to be verbal. "Any person that persists in disrupting this meeting." A disruption can be verbal or non-verbal. You will be in violation of the Flint City Code Section 3110, disorderly conduct, so I'm better than disorderly person, and will be subject for arrest for misdemeanor. "Any person that prevents the peaceful and orderly conduct of any meeting will be given one warning. If they shall persist in being disorderly and disrupting this meeting, that individual will be subject to arrest. Violators shall be removed from meetings." It didn't say you have to get up here and yell, it said you being disruptor. And the fact that we have people on this body that agreed with this disruption is sad. And I hope the fifth, ninth, and sixth ward take notes on this. If you want to overturn the ruling of the Chair, vote. Otherwise, we're gonna go ahead and vote no so we can proceed with this meeting.
I abstain, I, I don't even know what, which one of these offenses we talking about.
Ms. Lewis?
No.
Well, I'm waiting because we still have someone being disorderly.
Um, officers, could you please remove her from this meeting? This is, and our colleagues are laughing. This is disorderly conduct.
As I was saying, answering my colleague's question of why we have to have this piece of paper and also responding to the fact that you're saying we're the temperature in the room. Cannot say we are the temperature in the room, we're always running hot when you are the one who's helping turn up the heat by condoning behavior by adults who come here week after week after week and who know the rules. The bottom line is, they choose to be disorderly.
Political violence is real. Councilman Burns already said she has an investigation with the state police because someone threatened her life. So if that was true, she'll be voting to support this, if that was true. So I don't understand, see, because when we speak, you know, people try to turn off, but again, further, no, I don't need to quit because what we need to do...
My colleagues to the left of me are constantly speaking and in my ear and it's hard for me to follow what is being said.
Um, Ms. Winfrey Carter and Ms. Burns, bringing you all to order. Next time, it will be a warning. Thank you, Ms. Priestley. This isn't funny. And so as the people in here clap for this kind of behavior, the real voters and the majority of the city, they're not in favor of this. If Ms. Burns' life was in, was in harm's way, was, was to be threatened for real, as she said, someone put a tracker, she accused me of putting a tracking device on her car. If this was true, an Apple tracker device she did, we can play the tape back.
That man is not gonna harm you, he wants to talk to you. You can knock on the door. Y'all done sent plenty of them to my door and put an Apple trap on my vehicle.
She said that she feel threatened and so therefore the state police...
Request for information.
What, go ahead.
Did you know, I did not state you did, that that is not true. I did not state, you would have access to my vehicle. I did not state you did and I did have access.
That's enough, um, again, okay, so we're, we're moving on. And, and that's the point, we forget what we say on this microphone. We need to make sure that you said that your life, that you feel like your life is threatened. So therefore, you reached out to the state police to help you, just like I did when that gentleman told me, "Don't come to work." That's the reason why I get a police escort. I have a vehicle. I don't need to get a police escort unless my life is being threatened. So unless you, what you're saying is untrue, I don't understand why you're not supporting this. And the second that this kind of mayhem comes over to the fifth ward and to the ninth ward, you will be asking for your colleague's support. It's nice to get flowery speeches to say we are the thermostat, but we also are the elected, because somebody told me, "I don't want them coming to my house." So that's why I don't come down there. And we have council members driving people to your house. So we're about to vote on resolution 240191 and that is, want to make sure I read it into the record? This is the second reading of the enactment of ordinances for, at an ordinance to amend chapter 31. It is the code of conduct city of Flint by amendment section 3110. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Al Alamein?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy is not in. Excuse me, Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
No.
Ms. Burns?
No.
Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Jared?
Yes.
The vote is four yes, three no?
The vote is, um, four yes, three no, so that resolution to amend the disorderly persons subsection, it fails. So now we're on resolution 240192.
I think, um, I agree with, um, the council person in the sixth ward that we need to... Pardon me?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Can, can you warn the seventh ward, she's speaking out loud over here?
Absolutely, as soon as you all stop talking. So, so proceed.
Uh, point of order.
Yes.
You're not dealing with the issue, Madam Chair. I'm speaking, excuse me. You're not dealing with the issue, Madam Chair. I'm speaking, excuse me, I'm on a point of order. When she's yelling out and you're not warning her, and she has the floor, I'm asking you. That's her saying shocker and all this other, that's nothing to do with what the resolution, which is what we're...
Request for information.
So, what, what is your request?
So I'm reading changes that were made, and so I can't have comments about me reading changes that were made? That's very odd. So they can sit and have conversation back and forth with each other, but if I read something and have a comment to myself, there's a problem?
Thank you, Councilwoman Michelle, so proceed.
Let's move on. Yes, I said what I said. I agree with the council person in the sixth ward. I think we need to send this back to legislative, uh, committee.
And to hear from all interested parties. So, um, we will, um, so before I proceed, Mr., um, city attorney. Oh, sir, we didn't call you yet to the lectern.
What are you talking to me about?
Good idea. Proceed. So do we have any, anything you'd like to add before we start with this specific public hearing? All right, sir, you're out of order. Sir, I'm talking to you. You're out of order. Sir, that's your warning. Clerk Donahue?
This public hearing was scheduled based...
You have not been called to the lectern, that's your warning. We're, we're not here for games. What, what's going, you wish you know better, you don't? Sir, have a seat. So, anyone would like to speak during this public hearing?
Yeah, me, Liddell Lewis, I'm gonna stand up, and yes, I'm gonna speak. Yes, I'm talking to you in the same manner you talked to me and the other residents of the city of Flint. You's a busy mother as a president. You's a busy...
Sir, sir, let's stick to the topic.
Sort of, so.
So as we speak to utilizing the option of not being biased, we have to look at the broad picture. Because when we had the Ethnic Accountability Board members holding up signs saying bye Eva, that shows a bias within this coun, within the council body. So how can they serve in that capacity? But, but not once did we have anyone on this board saying anything to that. And then when we also had another, the same ethnic convoy, Bimra, threatened to beat the president's ass right here in this chamber. So, and it's definitely your prerogative if you choose to support Linda Booze, who's Quincy Murphy's appointment or not, but her job is not to come to council meetings. That's not her job. That's Dennis' job to come to council meetings. And however, excuse me, what's your point?
You are not being germane.
I'm being very germane.
Excuse me, I have, I have a point of order. You're not being germane stating that Dennis Pfeiffer. That is not germane.
Very germane, it's very germane. I'm bringing you to order, I'm bringing you to order. I bring... Ms. Burns, that's your warning.
I, I appeal that warning.
That's fine. So the, appeal, the ruling of the chair, forgive Ms. Burns the warning. Go ahead.
Did, did you ask for a second?
Yeah, yeah, you gave it, so, so go ahead.
Yeah, you, you supported it? Yeah, okay. You know what, um, Chairperson Lewis? There's something wrong with you. It really is seriously something wrong with you. I think you just love to hear the, the gavel beat the, that, that, that board there. You love it. You just wanna be in authority. There is no authoritative figures up here. We're all council members. We were all elected to these seats, just, I mean, a couple of us was not. A couple of us been appointed.
Thank you, Ms., um, Winfrey Carter. As the chair proceeds to speak, the point of order is denied. And so when the chair proceeds to speak, you can't overtalk the chair. That's not how this works. And especially when you utilize the floor, privileged motions to take the floor. The point of order, it, it was out of line, because I was speaking to attendance. Our colleague was referring to Linda Booze's attendance to council meeting. Linda Booze is not on this council. Dennis Pfeiffer is on this council. So when we speak, when we speak to people's attendance, let's be clear. It's his job to show up to this meeting, not Linda Booze. It's Linda Booze's job to show up to Ethnic Accountability Board's meeting. So when she don't go to that, then we have a problem with her. Until then, we need to keep the, the main thing, the main thing. So you interrupting the chair using a privileged motion, it's out of order. And that's why you caught your warning. So, if you want to overturn the ruling of the chair, please vote yes. If not, vote no. Roll call, Madam Clerk. Okay, that's not an option. Is it abstain? No, yes. Okay. All right, so, so this meeting is adjourned for lack of quorum at nine eighteen. Everyone have a great evening.